Those participating via Zoom, please state your name and jurisdiction when making a comment or asking a question. The MAG public comment process allows members of the public to comment on items that fall under MAG's jurisdiction. If you would like to comment at today's meetings, please complete the request to speak form. MAG staff can assist you with any questions you may have. If you parked in the garage, a validation stamp is available on the counter. If you purchase a transit ticket to come to the meeting, please see staff for a ticket. Hearing assistance devices are available from MAG staff. We will now begin the meeting with a roll call of all members.
Thank you, Chair. I will go down by agency and last name. Raquel Schatz, Apache Junction.
Present.
Thank you. Steve O'Brien.
Here.
Thank you. Raj Thoudam, Avondale. Thank you. John Willett, Buckeye.
Present.
Thank you. John McFarland, Chandler.
Present.
Thank you. Jennifer Acuna, Federal Highway Administration. Andy Smith, Town of Florence. Ryan Blair, Gilbert.
Present.
Thank you. Jack Lorbeer, Glendale.
Present.
Thank you. Brian Harville, Goodyear. Keith Dronaski, Litchfield Park.
Present.
Thank you. Monir Zaman, City of Maricopa.
Present.
Thank you. Angela Macaluso, McDot.
Present.
Thank you. Sabina King, Mesa.
Present.
Thank you. Robert Disorano, Paradise Valley.
Paradise Valley, Shar Johnson.
Excuse me, one more time?
Shar Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Andrews, Peoria.
Present.
Thank you. Letitia Vargas, City of Phoenix. Thank you. Christopher Wannamaker, Pinellas County.
Here.
Thank you. Brad Nowacek, Queen Creek.
Present.
Thank you. Jennifer Jack, Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community.
Present.
Thank you. Nathan Domi, Scottsdale. Jonathan Fuch, City Surprise.
Present.
Thank you. Corey Steely, Tempe.
Present.
Thank you. Aaron Herrera, Tolleson.
Present.
Thank you. Grant Anderson, Youngtown.
Here.
Thank you. And thank you, Chair. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item number two is the call to the audience. This is the opportunity for the public to comment on items that fall under MAG's jurisdiction that are not on the agenda, informational items, or items on the agenda for discussion and not for action. Fifteen minutes will be provided for the call to the audience unless the Chair requests an exception to this limit. Staff, have we received any requests to speak for the call to the audience?
Thank you, Chair. We've received no online written comments.
Thank you. MAG also provides the opportunity for members of the public to submit written comments via the MAG website. Any comments received two hours prior to the meeting have been shared with committee members in advance of the meeting for consideration and will be included in the formal meeting minutes. My understanding there's been no comments, correct?
Thank you, Chair. That's correct. We've received no online written comments or no written comments.
Thank you. Item number three is the MAG staff report. This item is on the agenda for information and will be presented by Velvet Matthew, Freeway Engineering Program Manager.
Thank you, Chair. I only have one announcement, that is to welcome Andy Smith to the committee for the Town of Florence. Unfortunately, I guess he's not here today. I know we have a long day ahead of us, so I appreciate everybody's attendance. Thank you.
Yes, everybody, welcome back. Item number four is the approval of the November 12, 2024, meeting minutes. Does any member of the committee have any questions on the minutes? Hearing none. Prior to approval of the minutes, there is an opportunity for members of the public to comment. Staff, have we received any requests for this item?
Thank you, Chair. We've received no online written comments for this agenda.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve agenda item number four?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from McDot and a second from the City of Phoenix. We will have those participating in the meeting online take part in a voice vote by turning on their cameras and unmuting their audio. We need to see the faces of everyone to participate in the voice vote. For those who cannot or do not want to turn on their cameras, staff will conduct a roll call vote. Staff will only call on those virtual participants who did not turn on their camera. Members, please leave on your cameras on until all the roll call votes so that staff can count the people's names whose cameras are not on. Can I have a voice vote of those in the room and those online? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Members, please leave your camera on. Staff, can you take roll call of the members participating virtually who did not turn on their cameras?
Thank you, Chair. John McFarland?
Yeah, I'm having trouble getting that on there for a second. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Have I missed anyone? All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number five is the Regional Connected Vehicle Based Pavement Condition Monitoring Platform. This item is on the agenda for information and will be presented by Justice Berman, Transportation Performance Planner. Justice?
Good morning, Chair, members of the Street Committee. Justice Berman, Transportation Planner here at MAG. Today I'll be discussing how connected vehicle data is used to assess pavement conditions throughout the region and how this supports project evaluation and scoring. MAG uses pavement roughness as a scoring criterion for competitive programs, more specifically for arterial rehabilitation and reconstruction. This metric supports MAG's commitment to maintaining the region's roadway infrastructure in a state of good repair and aligns with the federal requirements from the Federal Highway Administration, which mandates pavement condition reporting on the national highway system. Having consistent and current pavement condition data enables MAG and our member agencies to identify and prioritize segments with the greatest infrastructure need across the regional transportation network. Historically, pavement conditions are measured using specialized vehicles equipped with LiDAR. These surveys are costly and often are inaccessible to smaller jurisdictions. As a result, data coverage has historically been inconsistent and incomplete, particularly for collectors and minor arterials. Much of this data was outdated by the time it informed project scoring. In 2019, MAG's Regional Arterial and Bridge Needs Assessment Project aggregated pavement data, pavement condition data from numerous agencies, each using its own rating system, PCI, Pacer, PCR, and PQI. Through largely academic research to compare the disparate collection types, we developed a crosswalk to convert these into a good, fair, poor scale. And while functional, this process took nine months to complete and resulted in a loss of granularity and consistency. In 2023, with the SunCloud Data Portal, MAG piloted a new approach using data from Nayar Dynamics, a company that collects International Roughness Index data, or IRI, through onboard sensors in connected vehicles. These data are anonymized, aggregated, and processed to create pavement roughness maps for freeways and arterials as well as collector roads across the entire region. What you're seeing here is a screenshot from the dashboard showing long-term pavement conditions near North Gateway, which is where I live. And I can confirm that I've experienced those clumps of alerts on that roadway. This platform provides daily updates and 90-day aggregates and has been validated against traditional survey methods by MAG and independently. We've now subscribed to this platform, meaning that we'll be able to leverage the data currently incorporated in the SunCloud Data Portal, but now with regular updates. What does this mean for you, though? Well, this approach provides several benefits to your local agency. It can be used as a substitute for LiDAR-based pavement surveys and to validate or supplement traditional data collection methods. Agencies can receive timely, consistent updates and alerts for sudden surface degradation. You can use the data to track roadway conditions over time and easily identify strong candidates for future project applications where pavement condition is a consideration. And lastly, each agency will have direct access to the dashboard to view pavement roughness maps for their jurisdictions. Without requesting it from MAG, however, we'll always be available to provide assistance. Now, this brings me to my final point. And it's that MAG is hosting an in-person workshop on Monday, June 9, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at our offices. And Nayar Dynamics staff will be present to lead a detailed walkthrough of the platform. Now, this session will cover dashboard navigation, setting up alerts, and exporting pavement condition data. And an RSVP email will be shared following this meeting. Now, I want to thank you for your time. I know there's a lot of important work that follows this presentation, but if anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Justice. Do any members have questions or comments? Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Item number six is the Regional Competitive Programs' March 2025 Call for Projects Fiscal Years 26, 27, 28 Arterial Rehabilitation and Reconstruction Program. This item is on the agenda for recommended approval and will be presented by Patrick Stone, Deputy Transportation Director, Programming.
Thank you, Chair, Christo, members of Street Committee. First, just in acknowledgement and appreciation for the attendance, I think we have near perfect attendance today. I think it speaks to the substance of this particular agenda item, the interest on this agenda item. Just a couple of housekeeping items before we get started. There is a lot here, so it will take some time. The intent is to go through the Arterial Rehabilitation and Reconstruction Program. We'll go, I have some introductory slides. We'll then go into agency-specific slides. You will notice the slide deck is very generic. This was intentional to really focus on the projects and not have staff trying to cram in and get me slide decks in less than a day. So we'll go through each project. If staff in the room or staff online want to provide commentary, you can either come up to the podium or online, you can just unmute and provide that. We have approximately five minutes for each particular project. Tyler, who is assisting today, we also have all the applications available, so if there's a specific question to an application, we can also bring up the application and share that on the screen. And with that, we'll get started. So the Arterial Rehabilitation and Reconstruction Program. This is one of the first two new competitive programs that was developed under the Regional Strategic Transportation Infrastructure and Investment Plan, or the RSTIP. The arterial widening, which will follow this presentation, is the other. Of note, of the new competitive programs, this is the one that is exclusively federally funded. So again, federally funded projects have federally funded requirements. And then, a thank you to a lot of the folks in the room who are part of this. This didn't happen just by ourselves. We had a working group that met late last year through the latter part of 2024 to help develop the policies and procedures that guide this and ultimately led to this application and call for projects. On the screen, you actually see the cover of the policies and procedures, which are also on the website. These were approved just by MAG Regional Council on March 26, hence why we had such a condensed call for project schedule. We could not do the call for projects until the policies were actually approved. If you recall, we did the call for projects two days later after Regional Council approval. And really, what those policies do, they guide the program administration, talk about project eligibility, project evaluation, the weighting criteria included in there, along with scoring rubrics. And then finally, as noted in the policies, the technical review, which includes project ranking, is done by this committee and why we are here today. So I kind of wanted to do a little bit of a refresh, kind of go backwards a little bit, talk about the program in and of itself as we get to, because it really informs what you'll see later on in both the applications, the evaluations, and then ultimately the scoring and project ranking that will come later today. So first, under this program, and it kind of makes sense, but you know, one of the goals we have is safety, so safety is paramount in what we do. You see it really going through all of the programs that we do and what MAG is about. So one of the important components of this program is really to improve overall roadway safety. Having well-maintained roadway surfaces, really speaking back to Justice's prior item. Again, safety, but not just for the driving public, for all road users. We want safe and efficient mobility, so an emphasis on mobility. And then finally, really, just maintaining the region's infrastructure. We've invested a lot in the infrastructure in the region, and we want to keep it in a state of good repair. So the objective of the program is really is kind of a summation of those goals, but really it's enhancing mobility by upgrading roadways and providing safety for all road users. There goes project eligibility. And the eligibility component is the same for both arterial rehab and arterial widening. It's really the facilities on the one-mile arterial grid or facilities that connect freeways, highways, or other controlled access and other key corridors. Overview of the Call for Projects. The applications are on the MAG website. We posted them out there for the Street Committee to consume and provide their feedback and scores. Call for Projects, as noted, went out to members of the Management Committee, copying this committee, March 28. Applications were due May 2. Really good turnout. We had 24 applications that were received by the deadline, and we have $93.75 million in funding available for consideration today. So looking at the schedule, kind of a point in time where we're at, you can see the Call for Projects started March 28. We had the two workshops in the month of April. The applications came in earlier this month. Today, we sit at Street Committee reviewing the project ranking. Assuming successful approval of the project ranking, this will then go to the Transportation Review Committee next Thursday, where there will also consider the project ranking, but then we will also introduce the funding scenario. So one thing you will note in my slide decks today, we are not talking about funding. Funding is not in the purview of a technical committee. So next week at TRC is when we talk about what the funding scenarios might look like, and then it moves on from TRC into policy committees in the month of June. Ultimately, member agencies will be notified by June 30, the disposition of their application. Kind of a reminder of how we scored the projects, what was factored in. So we really have two components. We have both a quantitative and a qualitative. Quantitative is a 60%. As Justice noted, pavement roughness is one of those, AADT, and then crash rates. And then on the qualitative side, opportunity for member agencies to really tell the story. So we look at the unique attributes of the project, alignment with the goals of the program. Again, another component for safety. And then finally, community outreach. So as noted, there are 24 applications. Apologies, couldn't fit them all in one slide. It got to be untenable to try and read that slide, so I did break it up over two pages. Here's the first set of applications. You can see the member agencies, the application number, number of applications that they submitted. And then again, we continue on to the second page. As noted, 24 applications in total, a fairly good cross-section of the region, so very happy with what was submitted. Here, you can see a map. Apologies, it is a little difficult to look at. It's a big region. What you're really looking at on this map are the locations of all of the project applications that were submitted, along with the identifier of the application. And with that, I will pause for a minute, Chair. Are there any questions on the process in and of itself before I get into the actual presentations themselves from member agencies? Excellent. So the first project we have is for the city of Apache Junction. And this project is, oh, and apologies. So the way I will introduce your slide, I will introduce the location of the slide. I have the clicker, so I can advance through the slide. All the slides look the same. It comes up with a project location map, an overview of the project type. And then we have specific details at that point. If agency staff want to jump in and provide additional comment, feedback, or thoughts, more than welcome to. So the first project is the city of Apache Junction. Their Ironwood Drive Elliott Avenue to Baseline Road. And with that, Raquel or other members of the city, I will turn it over to you if you have anything you would like to add to the project. There it goes. Well, you're there, so if you wanted to do it from the, see, if it was for anyone in the audience that might need to come up.
Good morning. Our project is Ironwood Drive Elliott Road to Baseline Road. Previous to some annexation, Elliott Avenue, Elliott was our boundary with Pinellas County. So this is for, like I said, a roadway rehabilitation. This road is heavily traveled. It's currently two lanes from Elliott to Baseline. It recently, I'd like to say expanded, but the better word is exploded when the city purchased over four square miles to the south of this boundary here. And this was mainly brought on because of two developers in which they have scheduled right now to build over 11,000 homes in seven years, and we're in year three. So with all this construction, south of Elliott, Ironwood Drive from Elliott to Baseline has significantly, like, just decreased in the fairness of the pavement. We've got segments where it was cut to install and move utilities. We also have portions of that where we just recently did a HISAP program where we installed shoulders and rumble strips. And then, years before that, we'd had another HISAP project where we did safety pullouts in six areas because Ironwood Drive is more like a freeway in this area here. It's the main connection now from the 24 to the US 60. So we're just looking at the basic mill and overlay just of the existing pavement to get us to a point where, once we can look on getting more funds to do an expansion to three lanes, that's just really going to depend on when the developers are ready for stage two, pass these 11,000 homes to build an additional 10,000 homes north of Elliott.
Thanks, Raquel. And I forgot to clarify, part of the conversation in this did come up. We are doing the review of the applications. The members of Street Committee have provided qualitative scores. If, based on the review of the conversation today, you feel you would like to change a score that you may have submitted, please let myself know. I have a staff member who is attending the meeting virtually who could make that update, and we can update all of our scoring matrices real time if needed. So if you hear a particular application and think, oh, I really missed scoring something here. I wanted to change that score, we can certainly do that. Any questions?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Grant, go ahead, please.
Thank you. That map is extremely confusing. Most maps, up is north. Elliott runs east and west. She said south of Elliott, which would be incorrect. So in the future, can you either provide a north arrow or provide it going in the direction that we're all familiar with?
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Grant, if you look at the large map that I now have on the screen, we do have a north arrow. The Ironwood Drive does run north-south as shown on the map.
I thought that would be. She said she was going to do Elliott. I thought that would be Elliott.
No, the project is Elliott, I mean, is Ironwood Drive from Elliott to Baseline Road.
I misunderstood. I thought you were doing Elliott, my error.
Elliott was, used to be the boundary between the city of Apache Junction and Pinellas County.
Oh, okay, so the project is Ironwood, my error. I misunderstood. I understand now.
Any other questions for Raquel? Thank you. So next is the first of a few Buckeye projects. This is, apologies, should hit the clicker. This is the city of Buckeye, Southern Avenue from east of 231st Avenue to Rainbow Road. And John, I don't know if you want to speak to this project or if you have other folks here?
Yeah, I'll try to keep my four projects to 20, 25 minutes so we can get out of here on time. So, just kidding. So this is the first. This is Southern Avenue is our southern area. We're starting to get some developments. The western, I'm sorry, you have the western boundary or the left side of that line just opened up our 1.75 million square foot Ross distribution, so there's going to be a lot of semis out there. This part of the road. So now I'm talking about Chandler. So in Chandler, they're going to do some projects, but we're not going to score well on those because we need the money in Buckeye.
Bring me back there, Tyler. I, that, just, yeah. I have no idea what just. Go up all the way to Buckeye, one.
Yeah, I'll cover every project if you want me to.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, in 20 minutes. You guys have all heard me talk. I am not slow. This portion of Southern Avenue is recently been annexed from the county. It was built a long, long time ago. It's not in the best condition. But again, we have that large warehouse facility immediately to the west that's going to put traffic on here. Asking for like 1.7 million is the total cost. I think our portion of that is a little bit smaller. Adding some left turn lanes because there are none out there at the intersection of Southern and Rainbow today. I can answer any questions. It's pretty just a simple rehab project. No curb and gutter, nothing like that. It's just fixing the asphalt that's there today, one lane in each direction.
Any questions for John on this project? All right. So next project is Lower Buckeye Road from 207th Avenue to Watson Road.
This is not, it's a little over a mile and a half. Actually, it's right at a mile and a half. This road was built back in the 2000s during the big boom of housing. They built the north half of the road, but not the final lift because they anticipated they'll build the south half and then put the final lift. So traffic's been driving on the first lift for years, and now it's just wearing out. We need to fix it. In the middle of this project is our Yonker High School. At the western boundary is John McCain High School and a charter school. It is a quite busy road. But again, we're looking for a pavement pres, just to mill and replace the asphalt. And I guess we're retrofitting it about 1488 ramps that aren't picture perfect. So looking at about 5.6 million for this one, and then whatever the roof amount is.
Questions for John on this project? We're going to whip through this. All right, so the next project, the third project for the city of Buckeye, is McDowell Road Tonopah-Salome Highway to Sun Valley Parkway.
This is in the western boundary of Buckeye. We call it along the Sun Valley Parkway corridor. It's a little stub of a road. McDowell Road is east-west of that location for about a quarter mile or the project limits. And then it transitions to the Tonopah-Salome Highway that goes all the way out to Indian School. The elementary school out there, and I just lost it, sorry, because I just can't think it was not in Buckeye, so I don't really pay attention, sorry. It's one lane in each direction. We're looking for a little over a million to mill and replace this. There was a question that came from the committee of where Tonopah-Salome is in relation to this. Tonopah-Salome Highway was the western boundary, and how does that play into the marathon? We had that in our application that the Buckeye Marathon runs right on the edge of this. We do it every January. That's why it was referenced in it. So hopefully that answered the question that a committee member had. It's just the western boundary of the project. That's all I have on this one.
Questions for John or the city on the third project? All right, hearing none. The fourth and final of the Buckeye Rehabilitation projects. There we go.
This project is south of I-10 when the map comes up. Again, it's a little over, not quite two miles, almost one and three-quarter. It goes right down from Yuma Road, which is a section land roadway immediately south of I-10, down to the entrance. On the west side of this roadway is our airport. Again, one lane in each direction, looking for mill and replace, and about 2.5, 2.6 million. And this road actually is where the marathon runs. The marathon starts and ends at the airport, so. And then if we had to rank them, we would prefer Lower Buckeye as our number one preference because of the schools.
And what order do you have the other three?
Then I'd go Lower Buckeye, Southern, and then I think these two out here on the western side as a tie for three, four. So let's go three for this one, four for McDowell.
Any other questions for John? All right. Thank you, sir. Next, moving on to the city of Chandler, and John, I don't think you want to present on this one, correct? No, you're good, okay. So the first of the two projects, it's Arizona Avenue from Ray to Warner, and I don't know, Jason, are you? Okay.
You just press the button.
Good.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for your time this morning, and don't listen to John. Our Chandler projects are great. But yeah, the first project, Arizona Avenue, Ray to Warner, the city's very excited about this project. It's an old historic state highway. We get a lot of traffic here, and the center median is just. It's an old historic uh state highway. We get a lot of traffic here and and the center median is just pavers. It's wide open, a lot of left turns. So there there is some safety issues here that we wanted to address. So we plan to remove those pavers. Uh, part of it is maintenance as well. Those those pavers are terrible to to try to maintain. We can't replace them anymore. So causing safety issues as well. So that that's that's key is is removal of that. Pavers, replacing the asphalt, milling overlay, asphalt's in poor condition as well. Um, and then we did a uh roadway safety assessment out here as well over the last month or so and found several different elements that are going to be a part of this project associated with uh the traffic signals, lighting, pedestrian improvements, the the medians and and so on. So um, we plan to incorporate quite a few safety improvements. Um, and then another element which we're pretty excited about, we just completed a study last year on Arizona Avenue to do a uh to test the feasibility of a shared use path on the east side of Arizona Avenue. So this would be able to uh implement the first phase of that shared use path for one mile between Ray and Warner as well. So uh, again, a project we're very excited about, uh, improve the roadway for all users, particularly the bikes and pets with with that path on the east side of the roadway. Right now, there are no bike lanes, um, even though this is a high-capacity transit corridor. Um, has it has the city's best service at fifteen-minute frequency and it's planned for high-capacity transit in the future. Um, so a lot of pedestrian and bike activity there, and and we need to be able to better provide amenities for that population.
Any questions for Jason or the city? All right. The second of the two city projects, Chandler Boulevard, Price to Dobson.
All right, another project we're excited about. This this will be a little more straightforward. Um, standard mill and overlay, ADA improvements. Um, this is a uh high-trafficked area, connects to the uh Loop one-on-one and provides a connection toward downtown Chandler as well. So we get a lot of traffic in this area. The pavement condition is is poor, needs a mill and overlay. And uh, we've got some ADA issues that that we'll go ahead and address as well. But the yeah, this project's a much more straightforward project, just uh milling overlay with some ADA improvements. Additionally, we do plan, I should mention that we do plan to conduct a roadway safety assessment and and any findings from that, we would like to implement, um, assuming they're feasible um within the cost and the budget of the project.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason or the city? All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have the first of four projects for the city of Glendale. Uh, Jack, are you going to be presenting these items?
I'm going to start, Patrick, and then I'm going to turn it over to our principal engineer. But uh yeah, I would I would like to start and just uh mention and and thank the committee for consideration is that uh as the first one comes up, um, as you can see, Litchfield Road, Missouri up to Northern. And as I was looking at the applications and uh looked at some of the unique characteristics and all the applications were were great, but uh this one is very unique in that if you see Litchfield Road there, um, this and our second project, Glendale Avenue, are directly accessing the largest military base that we have, obviously, in the region, that being Luke Air Force Base with six thousand uh soldiers, uh air forcemen and families. And uh, I just wanted to mention that that is obviously very unique. The PCI is low, the ADTs are relatively high. Um, so I can't think of a better way in terms of at least the uniqueness of these two first projects in serving and representing the people who uh represent us. So with that, I will uh turn it over to Javier um Gorola, who's our principal engineer, and if he has any uh responses to technical questions. So thanks.
Thank you, Jack. This is Javier. Uh, so the ADT is anywhere between just past sixteen thousand, all the way to nearly twenty thousand as you approach uh northern, northern and northern Parkway uh to the north. So uh, again, as Jack mentioned, uh, we 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 get a lot of complaints, especially coming from the military base as to when we're going to be uh when we're going to be rehabbing one of uh this road, when we're going to be doing something with it. So kind of along uh along kind of what Jack was saying, this uh there was a scoping document that was done. And it did talk about uh uh looking at at some sidewalks, uh, and then some of the 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 safety considerations is upgrading some of the striping at the crossings, maybe adding some more signage, uh, bike symbols at the bike lanes uh using the green paint. Uh, the PCI is forty-one. But that was two years ago, so if I I I'll be surprised if it's anything past forty at this point. Uh, two and a half miles. And uh and yeah, I mean, this this is one of them. This and and Glendale, if I can get this one in Glendale, I'd 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 be a happy camper. Thank you.
Thanks, Javier and Jack. Any questions for the city on the first project? All right, moving on. As I noted, the second project is Glend- Glendale Avenue, excuse me, from El El Mirage to Litchfield. And then Jack and or Javier, whoever wants to take this.
Go ahead, Jack. I don't know if there was something you wanted to mention for this one. Or or I can or I can say something. Okay, so um again, uh, this is uh the the west end of this corridor butts up against Luke Air Force Base. And uh, again, it would be a uh a mill and overlay as well. Of course, we have to do a geotech report for this one. The PCI is twenty, so that's pretty bad. And uh, that's mostly surface distress, a lot of alligator, a lot of longitudinal transverse cracking. As I as I drive this, just from my my opinion, doesn't seem to be structure-related. Although I think a geotech report will uh what will determine that for sure. Let's see, a lot of uh potential right-of-way to be uh acquired with this. Uh, some uh some parcels here and there, especially along the west end of the project, south of Glendale, right there by Litchfield Road for sidewalks. Uh, the scoping document did indicate some of the considerations for this one. Let's see if you can allow me to look this up. Okay, so uh some of the considerations would be bicycle facilities, uh potential addition of Hawk signal crosswalk infrastructure. Again, that that was what the scoping document talked about, uh bus stop access, better bus stop access, paving the bus stops and concrete on the uh on on some of the the sidewalks. Right now, some of the sidewalks are 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 asphalt, so we would want to upgrade those to to uh to concrete and obviously make them ADA compliant with the current standards. So any um, any questions about this one?
I have a question.
Sure.
Your description says roadway reconstruction, but you indicated uh you needed uh different uh additional right-of-way. Removal and replacement does not require additional right-of-way. So somewhere there's a disconnect between your comments and what you're saying.
Okay, well, I I I guess I don't know. I'm not sure. So the uh the application did indicate if uh if right-of-way was required and if a scoping document was associated with it. So I just added all those elements per the the guidance.
Somehow we got to get it corrected for before we can determine what is necessary.
Committee members, this is Patrick Sage, also with the city of Glendale. Just to clarify, the right-of-way need for the uh Javier's referencing regarding the scoping document, it was a MAG design assistance exercise uh that created a conceptual plan. It was primarily focused on active transportation improvements along this corridor. And there are some locations where to add sidewalk to provide full connectivity along the corridor for pedestrians. Um, there would be some strip take right-of-way that may be required from adjacent parcels. So it wouldn't be for the rehabilitation activity. It would be for the additional safety improvements for pedestrians that we would incorporate within this project. Hopefully, that clarifies it, uh, Mr. Anderson.
Ho- hopefully.
No, that that is the case. So I hope that clarifies it for you.
So this project of fourteen nine eighty does not include any of the things you just outlined.
For clarification, it does include safety improvements adjacent to the roadway that would provide sidewalk connectivity. So construction of missing sidewalks, um additional uh traffic signal um upgrades and bike lanes as part, but that would be essentially within the existing pavement profile. So yes, it it does include off-street improvements, um off, behind-the-curb improvements to add sidewalk, which would in in a few locations require some right-of-way acquisition.
What uh which would be most important, your Litchfield Road or your Glendale Avenue?
I could, sure, sure. I think that uh the consensus with our transportation department and with Luke Air Force Base is that Litchfield Road would be the prime, because it provides direct access um in two locate or three locations to the base facilities. It would probably be the 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 most important project in terms of what the base would be looking for. To us, both of them are very important connections uh to to accessing the base and the adjacent commercial and residential development along along both uh roadways. But yeah, that that would be the priority, I would think.
Thank you.
I'm not sure where that's coming from, but.
Closing start as well as Litchfield, I think, would be certainly the higher priority when we've met with the uh the base representatives.
All right. Thank you, Jack, Javier, and Patrick for for some good feedback on the second Glendale project. Moving on, we have the third application for the city of Glendale. This is Camelback from fifty-ninth to eighty-third, and I'll turn it over to the city staff to provide additional detail.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so Camelback from five-nine to eighty-third, uh, three miles. And uh, it's pretty much already built out, uh, maybe except for the western terminus over at eighty-third Avenue. Uh, there is uh some development going on, I believe, on the north side still, if it if it's not already completed. And uh, really, this is this is probably a more simple, straightforward one. Uh, no right-of-way, no everything's going to be done within the existing footprint of uh of 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 the of the roadway prism. Simply a a mill and overlay uh to bring it back up to uh to current uh pavement smoothness and standard. So forty-three is a PCI uh which is fairly low. Uh, it's probably degraded uh in that time since then. And so again, this is one of the more uh easier ones, I think. Uh, it does provide for those who don't like to use the freeway, if they're coming in from the parts of the East Valley, going over to the west side, over to uh 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 Glendale uh Ballpark Ranch, Camelback Ranch. That's a spring training facility for the Dodgers and the White Sox. And so that gets a lot of traffic uh during the springtime. And of course, uh, provides uh this corridor provides access to the one-on-one to points uh north and south. So anyway, any questions about this one?
All right, hearing none. Thank you. And then, uh, excuse me. The final uh city of Glendale project is Dice Art from Glendale to Northern. Again, back to the city staff.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this one's just north of Glendale uh Avenue uh to Northern. Another another relatively simple one. Uh, basically, uh, just a a four, I'm sorry, uh, a mill, a simple mill and overlay just to uh improve the surface conditions. It is currently at a PCI of uh uh, where was it? Oh, fit fifty-three. There we go. It's about fifty-three. And uh, you know, it it probably just needs a a two-to-three-inch mill and overlay to bring it back up just enough. There is some development going on on the other side. So ideally, uh, this would be programmed uh when that is completed. Any questions?
All right, thank you all. Next, we have the city of Goodyear, Estrella Parkway, McDowell Road uh to the Amburran Street. Martin, are you taking this one? All right, thank you.
So this is our one request for the uh ARRP. Uh, this is a mile section that connects to the I-ten from so this is a main egress and ingress to the ballpark, the PIR Raceway. And also the main thoroughfare for our EMR residents, which makes up a great portion of the uh community. And this is also one of the main thoroughfares to our new uh GSQ, the Goodyear Civic Square.
Patrick, I think the microphone went out, but I I'm thinking you're saying we're up.
It is. I it would help if I actually turned the switch on. Yes, uh, apologies, but yes, this is Camelback Road, Denny Boulevard, two hundred and twenty-seventh Avenue, and I think, Keith, you're taking this.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it, Patrick. Uh, see, Litchfield Park's only request for Camelback Road, Denny Boulevard, two hundred and twenty-seventh Avenue. Denny Boulevard is about block, block and a half west of Litchfield. It's about one point six miles. I'm asking to reconstruct Camelback Road between this section. Uh, we will do a pavement evaluation to ensure that a full reconstruction uh of both pavement and subgrade is required. Uh, there is a significant amount of alligator cracking to the point where uh, you know, pieces are coming out in various locations. So it keeps our public works folks busy. Uh, this section was fully built uh from best we can see from McDot in two thousand and one. Uh, city annexed this in two thousand and twenty-two. A majority of this section of Camelback Road does not have accessible sidewalks, pedestrian ramps, uh portions of curb. There's areas where there's drainage channels right off the north side of Camelback Road that need to have an evaluation of uh whether we need barrier or not. Some access control would be looked at. The section directly west of us is being designed currently as a joint effort with developer. Uh, so that'll extend the section uh from from our edge at Denny Boulevard all the way to the west. Uh, this area is a a really busy hub for regional traffic, a lot of heavy truck traffic. There's a lot of tilt-up panel, uh industrial buildings in this area. Uh, we have also a dozens of uh developments in the West Valley. Um, this is a connector road between the West Valley, Phoenix area. The uh limits were built in various stages by McDot in that area of two thousand and one. So there's some you know, lane tapers and and drops that need to be evaluated on if they need to be extended, curb lines installed or modified. So that is our re- request for one point six miles of Camelback Road.
Thank you, Keith. Any questions for Keith of the city? All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Town of Paradise Valley's project. This is Tatum Boulevard, Caída del Sol to McDonald Drive. Shar, are you presenting this item? Do we have someone from the town presenting this item?
I'm sorry. I thought I had my audio on. Good morning, everyone. This is Shar Johnson with the Town of Paradise Valley. And Chris Martinez is online as well with the town um to speak on the Tatum Boulevard project. Good morning. Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, great. So Tatum Boulevard, um, the project quarter is from Ca- Caída del Sol, which is the northern limits of the town to a pair uh McDonald Drive. So the project is approximately two point six miles. The section of uh Tatum Boulevard is north-south, and it's in our western section of Paradise Valley and is one of two major uh arterials in the town. So we're anticipating um for So we're anticipating, um, for improvements, asphalt repairs, rehabilitation and repairs to extend the useful life of the pavement. There is cracking and, uh, minor rutting near the intersections, uh, Lincoln and ones to the north. And curb and gutter repairs is, is anticipated for the project as well. We are, um, estimating the project to be around one point seven eight million. And for the pedestrian features, for safety features for the project, which, which includes pedestrian improvements. There are, uh, there are sidewalk gaps along the Tatum Boulevard border on the eastern section from Doubletree Ranch Road to Mountain View, approximately point five miles. We're anticipating, um, to install, um, sidewalks in that gap. There's a missing section. So this will create a continuous sidewalk, um, from Shade Boulevard to the north to Lincoln Drive, um, on the south end. And there are also transit stops along Tatum Bu- Boulevard. So this will actually help with that, um, respect for, um, pedestrians going to and from those stops, as well as residents or, um, pedestrians that are using our hiking trails in the area. The other improvement for safety we are anticipating is, um, the, the retaining walls that are on the western side between Lincoln and Quartz Mountain. Those, um, retainer walls are creating, um, there's an instability there and creating some erosion issues when it comes to, um, impeding on the pedestrian safety on the sidewalk. So we anticipate that being, um, needing to be repaired as, as well as a part of this, um, project. So our, um, pavement condition index analysis that was conducted in December twenty twenty-four, the pavement condition is around, let's see, I believe it's around seventy or seventy-one. And so with that being said, we're just, you know, looking for resurfacing, um, type of pavement to just extend a useful life for the project. And so in the corridors, it's a pretty busy section, um, of, um, roadway, two lanes in each direction, and it connects City of Scottsdale to the south and to the, I mean, to the north and then to the south, um, near Camelback Mountain, which is a major trailhead for hikers. And this, um, I want to add additionally, uh, we do have a lot of large resorts in the area. And this particular roadway section, um, on Tatum North and Lincoln is anticipated to be, to be a part of the upcoming Phoenix Marathon route. So we, um, that, those are the two unique features I wanted to bring out. So Chris, I don't know if you had anything to add for the project?
No, I think you covered it well, Shar. Uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Shar. Any questions for the town? Excellent. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next, moving on, we have the first of four city of Phoenix projects. Uh, the first being Thirty-Fifth Avenue from I-ten to Camelback Road. LaTisia, are you taking these? All right, excellent.
Yes. Um, good morning, Chair and members of the MAG Streets Committee. My name is LaTisia Vargas, and I'm with the city of Phoenix. So I'm excited to talk about our four projects under the ARRP program. Um, the first one, um, is our Thirty-Fifth Avenue I-ten to Camelback project. So the project in its, in its entirety runs for three point two miles, and there are, um, tr- five travel lanes, um, in the current, uh, configuration. Um, it is a roadway rehab project, a reconstruct pavement restoration, and the, uh, we will be building raised medians as a part of this project, and we're really doing a very comprehensive project, installing pedestrian safety amenities, including hybrid beacons and other ADA improvements. Um, and our existing pavement does show signs of deterioration. I think one of the things I really want to highlight about this project is it was funded under the Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development, um, discretionary grant. So the city of Phoenix was excited to receive seventeen point four million dollars to do this project. Um, that was in twenty twenty. Um, we are ready to go, ready to go to construction. And what I can tell you is, and like a lot of agencies, um, I'm sure you're feeling, um, inflation costs, um, a lot of costs have increased with materials. And so with that, uh, our project is estimated at thirty-nine million dollars. Um, we have seventeen point four million dollars, which puts us at about a forty percent federal match. Under the current, the current NOFO appropriations, the project is allowed up to eighty percent federal dollars. So with our request, uh, we are asking for, um, the project length that I cited, the costs that are in our application are one-third of those costs. So we are asking for ten million dollars to leverage and really build a wonderful project that's going to speak to a lot of the goals that MAG has for our region, and this is a perfect project for it. And so with that, um, I also want to highlight that this corridor is on the high injury network. Um, we have had over the last five years, over six fatalities along this corridor. Um, in total, there are about eight hundred and thirty-five collisions over the last five years along that corridor as well. Um, this corridor experiences over thirty-two thousand vehicles per day. So this is a very busy corridor. It's a wonderful regional opportunity to be a part of a great project. And again, with the funding, um, if awarded through the ARRP program, it would put us at only seventy percent federal dollars. We still ha- have a lot of local stake in this project. Um, with that, um, I want to open it up for questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you have all right-of-way necessary?
Absolutely. We just recently, um, uh, we're working with federal highways on this project, and we have just been green-lighted to go to construction. Um, obviously, that takes time, and with the opportunity to use these funds, we would work with our federal highway partners to add the additional federal dollars to the project. So we are absolutely ready to go.
Thank you.
Other questions for LaTisia for the city? All right then, moving on to the second of the city's projects. This is Lower Buckeye Road from Twenty-seventh Avenue to Nineteenth Avenue.
Thank you. So, um, the corridor here, as it's shown, is about a mile in length. Um, there are four lanes of traffic on this corridor. Um, can we go to the next slide, please? Um, this project, again, uh, will focus on, uh, roadway re- rehabilitation, reconstruct. Um, we are replacing the existing curb gutter, sidewalk, ramps and driveways. And the pavement out there is in very, very poor condition. There is industrial, um, vehicles that uses. So you can imagine, um, there is a lot of wear and tear on that corridor. Um, I do want to add, um, that, uh, we have over twenty-five total collisions along this corridor from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, and the corridor is experiencing, um, fourteen thousand eight hundred and forty, uh, vehicles per day. Um, this is a great project. Again, it aligns very well with the ARRP program. Um, it's, uh, an area of persistent poverty, and it is an opportunity to do something that, uh, we've been asked a lot to do. It is currently at ninety percent design. Um, we are, we do have it programmed in our CIP, uh, by getting this funding, this would allow us to leverage pro- um, the program to do more projects. Um, the city of Phoenix has over five thousand miles of roadway. So you can imagine, like everyone's capital programs, they are stretched. And so we do the best we can, um, with our program. And so this would really help us leverage, uh, the program and do more projects.
Thank you, LaTisia. Any questions for the city, uh, on the Lower Buckeye Road project? All right, hearing none. Moving on to the next of the projects. This is Seventh Avenue from Southern Avenue to Broadway Road. LaTisia?
Thank you, Patrick. Um, again, this is, um, a one-mile segment of roadway. Uh, we have five lanes total in this project. Um, this project, uh, will focus on rehab and rehabilitation. Um, we are looking to, um, add the west half of, uh, the roadway cross-section. And there was a little, uh, mishap in our application. We initially, um, were considering the widening program as a part of this, because in our mind, we're widening the roadway, right, to add curb gutter si- sidewalk as well as bike lanes on the west half of, uh, the street. Uh, what, uh, we realized, though, is that we're not adding any vehicle lane miles. So, uh, this project does align very well with the, um, ARRP program. Um, the, uh, pro- the corridor carries a little over twenty-six thousand vehicles per day. Um, we have, um, a hundred and fifty-four collisions, um, reported along that segment over the last five years. I will tell you, this project is in an area of persistent poverty, and we are being asked by a lot of community members in that area for a walking path along Seventh Avenue. Um, this project is currently in pre-design right now. So we have kicked off, uh, the project with, uh, local funds to really identify what needs to happen. And that's what really helped us fill out this application, because we think it's a great project. The community really wants it, and we'd love to receive funding to do this project. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, LaTisia. And then the final city of Phoenix project. This is Cave Creek Road from Angela Drive to Beardsley.
Absolutely.
Sorry about that. There we go.
So this project length runs for one, one point seven miles. It is, um, has five lanes total. Um, next slide. So we will also be doing a roadway, uh, rehabilitation, um, along this stretch of roadway. Um, we will also be upgrading, uh, pedestrian access, uh, sidewalks, uh, curb gutter, uh, ramp, ADA ramps and driveways. Um, there are several deficiencies in this project area. This project is currently at a hundred percent design. I will tell you, this project, um, like, you know, many of our capital improvement programs, um, did suffer, um, in terms of, you know, the recession. We had to shelve this project. Um, that's why this project is ready to go. Um, we would definitely have to refresh things, uh, to meet federal guidelines. Um, this project, uh, has along this corridor, two hundred and eighty-nine collisions. There were two fatalities, um, along this corridor from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. Um, carries over thirty-five thousand vehicles per day. Um, again, we're excited to, um, be able to leverage this project and, and deliver this project. And, uh, with the design, um, you know, ready to go and just needs a refresh, we think this is a very good use of federal, um, regional dollars.
Thank you, LaTisia. Any questions for the city on the Cave Creek Road project?
I have a question. Have you prioritized these projects in any order?
So, um, if, yes, uh, we have. Um, the, actually, the prioritization is spot-on in terms of the list that you see in front of you and how you score the projects. That's how we would prioritize, um, our four projects. With thirty, first, Lower Buckeye, second, Seventh Avenue, third, and Cave Creek, fourth, in the order that they are, um, in the application roster.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, LaTisia. Any other questions? All right. Next, we move on to the Town of Queen Creek. Uh, Chandler Heights Road, two hundred and fourth to Ellsworth. Julian, are you taking this one? All right.
Good morning, committee. Julian Gieseng, Deputy Public Works Director, Town of Queen Creek. Just want to start out by thanking you all for your time. I know I've been on the other side of this table doing the scoring and everything like that. So again, thank you for your time for on this one. Uh, this is an exciting project for us, Chandler Heights, uh, in Tempe. Uh, this is about a half mile of roadway. In the application, I call it a Frankenstein project. The north, uh, side of the roadway has recent development. It's been improved with sidewalk, uh, curb and gutter, new pavement. And you get to the middle, it's an old chip seal with multiple layers of, uh, treatments over the years. And the south part is, uh, just two inches of asphalt on native material to, was tacked on to add a through lane. This project will, uh, rebuild that to a, a full lane. Also to, uh, make sure that we're, we had the full investment, adding curb and gutter. On the south side is just an earthen shoulder, so that we would add sidewalk to make sure that we are accommodating, uh, full access there. Adding a bike lane, uh, we have one on the north side and not on the south. Um, and so really add lighting, make this a really a, a corridor that, uh, everybody can use. Uh, the eastern terminus is Ellsworth Road, one of the highest, uh, used roads, um, in the town. Connects to our downtown, to, uh, government services. And on the west end, as you move west, there's a school, um, with, uh, many students. And then at the, uh, full one mile is a high school there too. So a lot of, uh, parents and students use this route. So we think this is a, a great investment. And, uh, I'm open to answer any questions at this point.
Thank you, Julian. Any questions for the town?
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Next, we have the first of the two projects of the Salt River Pima Maracopa Indian Community. This is Villa de Ventura, Pima Row to the SR one oh one Pima. Uh, Jennifer, are you taking this item?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much. Um, our first application is Villa de Ventura from Pima to the Loop one oh one. Uh, this was constructed by ADOT about thirty years ago, and, um, it was part of the ADOT system up until a few years ago. Uh, it's had minimal, um, pavement preservation over the years, so it's in need of a reconstruction. Uh, it's a four-lane road in poor condition, and we will reconstruct the pavement structural section, address any drainage issues, add bike lanes, uh, some raised landscape medians, street lighting, and some sidewalk connections that are missing. Um, it is connected to, the spring trainings facility is directly south of this road, and we have commercial businesses and private schools on the north side. And it does connect the city of Scottsdale residential area to the Loop one oh one. Right? Uh, the design is at ninety percent for this one. We're moving forward. It's, um, part of our, um, tip. And we don't have CIP funded, um, we don't call it a CIP at Salt River, but it's on our tip. So, um, we would love to utilize this funding to help reconstruct this pavement. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Second of the two, uh, projects for the community is Talking Stick Way, again, from Pima Row to the one oh one.
Thank you. So this is very similar. It's just a mile south. Um, it's Indian Bend Road, but on the community, it changes names to Talking Stick Way. It is from Pima Road to the Loop one oh one. Again, it was constructed by ADOT thirty years ago when the freeway was built and has received minimal attention since. The tribe has taken over this roadway. And so this is our next one on the list after Villa de Ventura. So we have not started design on this one. Um, but it will also need to be reconstructed. It is in very poor condition and, uh, very similar, uh, scope of work. This one has the landscape median, so we don't anticipate adding many of those, but we will evaluate ADA improvements um, and just resurface the roadway. Again, this is an, another connection to our Major League Baseball Spring Training Facility and bring Scottsdale residents over to the freeway, so highly traveled. Any questions on this one?
All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
All right. So next, we have the city of Scottsdale, Thomas Road, Fifty-Sixth Street to Seventy-Fourth Street. Nathan, are you taking this or is Susan?
Susan, are you online?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Well, hopefully the parking garage construction is going to be quiet for a few minutes. Uh, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, this project is on Thomas Road from Fifty-Sixth Street to Seventy-Fourth Street. It's two point two five miles, um, just south of Old Town, and it's in very poor condition. Um, we had a geotechn- uh, pavement's evaluation completed in twenty twenty-four, and only sixteen and a half percent of this project area is considered good, the rest being fair to poor. I was not a good student in college, but if my grades had reflected the PCI that we're dealing with, um, I would have had to find something else to do. Uh, the, so the road needs full reconstruction for two of those tw- uh, miles. And it will also include intersection improvements at Sixty-Eight Street and Thomas with right-turn lane and drainage utility relocations, str- new street lights, improvements to the traffic signals and ITS, ADA, ADA improvements, and also coordinate water line and sewer line upgrades with the water department. Um, not in the budget for this, but coordinate with the work. Drainage improvement in the alley to the north, and also work with SRP near the Crosscut Canal, uh, path for sidewalk and safety upgrades. And this is in the current- And this is in the current CIP, but does not have the funding needed. Just as a reminder, this is a minor arterial with 40 mile per hour speed limit. We have two westbound and three eastbound lanes. Getting into the condition, the geotech evaluation found moderate severity, alligator cracking, other cracking and weathering, fatigue and, excuse me, fatigue, cracking and ravelling, it says, which are two main types of distress associated with structural failure of the pavement. So this is, this is a pretty, pretty bad need out there. The project is fully scoped and at 95% design. We just need to do additional scoping and design since the street light replacement was recently added. We did do two RSAs at Scottsdale Road as well as 64th Street. And the recommendations from those that is included in this project are the improvements I mentioned as including larger and new warning and regulatory signs, restripings, crosswalks, new improved pavement markings, the new traffic signal and ITS equipment at each of those intersections with other improvements, streetlights and modifications to turn lanes and median modifications as well as curb ramps. We will, we have been following the federal process throughout, but we need to do a new environmental clearance just because of the timing. We do have most of the right-of-way needed. We just need some additional land rights on the north side now to accommodate those new streetlights. And SRP will be relocating power lines on the south side to accommodate these road improvements, which is also very important for the ADA. But getting back to the condition of the road, so the, we had, let's see, 38.9% was considered fair and 44.6% considered poor condition with an average of 47. So it's, it's pretty, pretty rough along the roadway, especially when you look through that detailed report and all of the existing conditions photos. We also have done quite a bit of public outreach for this, and we'll follow our typical process for the additional updates to the public since this is no longer a micro-steel project as had been originally planned. I could take any questions you have or clarifications.
Thank you, Susan. Any questions for the city on this project? All right.
Thank you.
Last one of the arterial rehabilitation and reconstruction program projects. This is for the City of Surprise, Waddell Road from Dice Art to Bullard.
Thank you, Chair and committee members. Thank you for your time in ranking this project. Being the last of the project, I thought there was a Tempe project.
Oh, there is a Tempe project. My apologies.
Last one in the blog, but this project is arterial rehabilitation and improving pedestrian connections between Dice Art and Bullard Avenue. It's a $10 million request with 30% local match to improve pavement conditions and also enhance. This is the section of road where there's no bicycle facilities, so we want to widen. We don't want to be moving curbs as part of this project, so we'll be widening the sidewalk to accommodate bicycles on the sidewalk. So that's the intent of, again, we just want to add that, including the ADA investments as part of this project. That's all I have, and I'm happy to take any questions. I also learned that using less words, there's more greater chance of getting the project funded, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the city on the Waddell Road project?
Don't feel shy, Nathan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now on to the last project that I should turn the page and I would know if it's the last project. So this is, last but not least, the City of Tempe project on Broadway Road from 55th Street to Mill Avenue. Corey, are you taking this project?
Yeah, I got this one. Can everyone hear me? Just want to make sure. Okay. So this is Broadway Road, 55th Avenue or 55th Street to Mill Avenue. The PQI for this project is currently in the 40s, generally across the roadway condition. This is right near the new Broadway Curve Reconstruction Project, so this is pretty important investment to make sure that that investment that was done by ADOT for the Broadway Curve pays off. Really, the economic reason to do this is we have our Makers District to the south of the, of the, of the project. That Makers District was identified by our Economic Development Department as important. It's something that produces anything from tortillas to milk to doors and auto body shops. So there's a lot of economic redundancy in this project, so that makes the investment a little bit safer. From a safety perspective, we've had four serious fatal accidents, or serious accident, sorry, four fatal accidents in the last five years in this roadway. There was 17 serious accidents along this roadway during that time as well. All four fatal accidents actually occurred between Priest and Mill Avenue at nighttime too. So, and one of the things we noticed when looking at this project was we do not have lighting along the north side of the arterial. So we think there's a huge safety benefit by bringing those lighting forward. There's sidewalk and ADA gaps. That's pretty important in this area. It's bordered by two area codes, 85281, 85282. Those are some of the highest, when we look at census data, some of the highest pedestrian, bike and transit activity areas in the corridor, so the ADA improvements are pretty important along this roadway. Additionally, when we look at safety data, we noticed that two of the signals stuck out to us, and they were actually not up to our current standards. Those are back in industrial and Broadway as well as Broadway Road and Roosevelt. We plan to reconstruct those to allow permitted protective movements along the roadways because we noticed that there was some left turn conflicts in those data, in that data. And some unique characteristics along this, Tempe High School is actually along the east end of the corridor. It's actually bordered on two sides by railroads, so this is, Broadway Road is really the only way for kids to get to school, walking or biking, and we have a lot of substandard or a non-ADA compliant sidewalk along that stretch. So it's really important to make sure that we can get kids to school. We also have two bike boulevards across the project, so safety for multimillionaire users will be improved through these improvements as well. It looks like that's it. Open to questions if there's any.
Thanks, Corey. Any questions for the city on the Broadway Road project? All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair. So next, we will get into the actual project ranking. I was informed lunches here. What we'll do is we'll probably go through the scoring of the rehab projects. We will pause the committee, hopefully with the chair's indulgence, for a brief period of time, and then we'll pick up with the arterial widening program.
I have a question, general question.
Yes, please, go ahead, Grant.
I guess more for staff. I've heard more than one jurisdiction say they needed some right-of-way for sidewalk or other purposes. This is federally funded. Doesn't that require an EIS?
And I will defer somewhat to some of the engineers rooms, Mr. Chair, Mr. Anderson. It really depends on the project, and EIS is actually a fairly significant environmental document. I would tend to think where most of these projects are, you're probably just looking at a categorical exclusion. I would assume, from what I heard from most agencies, these are minor takes. They're not, you know, I think one of them said it was just some strips that they need to probably get.
They would need somebody from the feds to say that was what was required. So wouldn't they need somebody to say that that's okay?
Well, yeah, but that, Mr. Chair and members of committee, Mr. Anderson, that's part of the project development process. I think we heard today, we have a lot of projects in varying degrees of development, some just getting started, some ready to go to construction as we heard. Because this is the, these are federally funded, they do have to follow the federal process. Our partners at ADOT are in the room, part of the committee. They'll follow the process. They will have to get the documents upgraded. You know, they'll have to get the appropriate clearances and have it bid ready. So that's part of the development process, Grant, is to do that. Analysis of what kind of federal action would be needed for environmental, along with right-of-way and utilities.
Good.
All right, any other questions before, yes, John?
I just asked for clarification, and this is, I'm kind of new to this whole thing. I think our total ask for all these projects is significantly higher than the 93 million available. Is how do I say, I'll just be blunt. How, is there any ability for some of the projects to be downsized? Or maybe some of the other items to make, would an agency be willing to remove something so the peanut butter could be spread a lot better? I'm just asking, I'm just, I don't know if anybody else is thinking it, maybe I'm the only one, but I just, but I'd ask it.
You're, you're not correct. Chair Cristo, members of the Street Committee, Mr. Waller, yeah. We are oversubscribed in both programs. We do have more requests than we do have funding. That being said, we do not do funding considerations as part of the Street Committee. We're just looking at the rankings. That being said, we will develop, assuming that we have a consensus today. We will then be developing very quickly, a very quick turnaround. The priority, we will take the prioritized project ranking out of this committee and then provide a recommended funding scenario to TRC. Next week at TRC's meeting on the 22nd, there will be that opportunity. So committee members may reflect on the recommendation made and say, hey, what about, have you thought of this? Could we do something else? So we may get some variability in the process, but we have to usually give them a thing to digest and reflect on. And so that will be next. But yeah, great, great point. Other general questions? Alrighty, I am, apologies in advance. This is going to be a little difficult to read. I, I just apologize, there are a lot of columns. I did try and synthesize this down. So the way I'm going to do the scoring is you will see both the quantitative and qualitative scoring. I will go through each factor for each set of scoring for quantitative qualitative, and you can see the rank order by factor. Please note, these are not the final rankings as I go through. The last slide that you see from me will be the final ranked order. But I didn't want to just start with the final and people just instantly fixate on the, where are my projects? You can now see kind of how we evolved into that. So the first factors will be the three quantitative factors that we have, and then the final four will be the qualitative factors. See if this actually works. There we go. Okay. So quantitative. This is the ranked order of pavement condition. You can see the top-ranked project from the City of Buckeye going down to the Surprise Project. These, so this is, this is the ranked order based on pavement condition. This came from Data Mag provides you her justice talking about that in the prior committee. So this is the ranked order just on pavement condition alone. 30 points, actually, we do a normalized scoring for this. So this is actually a reflective of a top-scoring project within the region for that factor. You will note the range of things. We do normalize the scores, so we don't just have certain projects pushing the envelope either at the top or the bottom. Second factor, again, the reranked order, this is for AADT. Again, you see the ranking from 1 to 24. We do occasionally get ties in here based on the numbers. So again, you can see the ranked listing, starting with the, I believe it's City of Chandler project, moving down to a Buckeye project. This was just purely for AADT. And then the final factor, safety data and consideration. And again, you can see the rank order of projects. I think you heard Corey talk about the Tempe project, but you can see them going again in ranked order of safety considerations. So what you get, this is the final ranked order for the quantitative factor only. I will have a cumulative factor at the end, but this is the ranked order for quantitative, which represents 60% of the project score. Pause for a moment. Any questions, comments, feedback? I do have some of our technical staff online if there are any specific technical questions that you might have. And I understand this is a lot to digest, and I'll certainly pause for a moment here.
Hey, Patrick, I got a question.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So the pavement condition weighted points, is that based on, so we're in order from 30 down to what looks like 13.7, 30 being the worst, based on the quantitative and 13 being a better pavement evaluation?
Yes, and actually, as we were preparing the slides, I was asked that exact same question. Thank you, Chair. Cristo, members of the committee. Yes, this is, it's sort of like golf, I guess, but yes. So a pavement in worse condition scores higher. So it's sort of an inverse relationship. If your pavement, it has a low factor, you get more points. Those in better conditions scored, didn't score as poorly. Good question, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, qualitative. This is the part that was actually ranked by the Street Committee members. Oh, yeah, going back. Yes, Chair.
I'm just wondering, before we get into the rankings, should we give people the opportunity to change their scores if they want to?
Yeah, so quantitative is done by Mag staff, so we really don't have a mechanism to change the score. If we absolutely had one where they're like, I just think this is incorrect. We, like I said, I have our staff online. They can certainly speak to that. The qualitative, and thank you, Chair, members of the Street Committee. As I go through the qualitative scores, if you, if you did see a score that you like, hey, you know, thinking about it, the presentations I heard earlier, I would want to change that score. We can actually do that. We have the ability to do that. One of my staff is on the meeting, and Tyler, you would need to make Lauren a co-host if we get to that point. But yes, we could actually update the score and then say, hey, you know, the original ranking was this. Here's the revised ranking. But yeah, we can do that, Chair. Thank you for mentioning. So qualitative, because there are additional factors, apologies, it's a little bit smaller on the screen. I just apologize. I tried to shrink it down. The problem was is if I narrowed the column widths to get more on, then I went on to two pages. I wanted at least to be able to show the agencies, all 24 projects on one screen. So the first, of course, is meets the stated goals of the program. And then we have the ranked order, there we go, of highlighting unique attributes. We then move on to, oh, apologies, I'm going a little faster, so give everyone a chance to digest. But this is the unique attribute factor. We then move on to safety. Yes, safety improvements, thank you. And then finally, community outreach. So you have the scores there, and then again, what you get is you get a cumulative final qualitative score. So again, this is the qualitative score done by the members of the Street Committee, and I'll pause here. All right. Here's the final slide. This is the actual final ranked order, including both quantitative and qualitative factors. This is the cumulative project ranking. It is oh my goodness, it cut, it appears to have cut one of the projects off. I have to look. Yeah, apologies. I'll have to, I'll have to double check why I've lost a project here. Hold on. It is the Surprise Project. Yes. Apologies, yes. It is, I, apologies, this is inexcusable. Yes, there was, it did inadvertently cut off the final line. It is the City of Surprise. I do have cumulative project ranking here as well of people I see. But yes, it was the City of Surprise Project was the final project on the list. Otherwise, you can see the update. We'll get this corrected and get this updated so that we can do that prior to voting. We'll make sure that the committee has the full project ranking. Well, what we, what we may do, Chair, with your indulgence, we may pause for a moment here. We have lunch. Folks can grab lunch. We'll, we'll pause for a moment. Tyler, I'll go and get that fixed, and we'll come back down, and we'll show the revised cumulative project ranking with all 24 projects on the screen.
Thank you, Patrick. Yeah, so it's 11:31 right now. It'll take a half hour, and then we'll come back and, and we'll continue. Thank you, everybody.
Oh, yeah, you should see it right there in front of you. We'll resume at 12:01. I keep person fixed. So it was, it was there and for some reason wasn't showing it like it. Something, yeah. And I don't. And that was the trick is like I tried to make it as big as possible. I think I must have just, I must have gone beyond, right beyond that, that edge there. So I think he just shrunk the table for me, but either way it's there. So we're good.
Our title, our title, I figured out it was on the street, but for some reason it was hiding.
Interesting.
So did he, he didn't get it to come back?
No, but this was really good. I felt like it was very clear, easy to follow.
Get all under information.
For sure. Yeah. I brought my reading glasses. It's really not bad.
It's not as bad.
Okay. Yeah, relax. Yeah. Sure.
Need it so much. I can make the call a lot easier. So it's easier to read that.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. No, this is good.
So we actually have three.
I love it. We work together quite a bit. But in terms of, yeah, the man knows. Children alive, street design, it's kind of. The only thing I joke with.
Yeah, yeah, I could give a breath, like.
In meetings, you know, what's going on. I just know they have.
Not the very, the conventional stuff.
Teams and.
Jennifer Acuna, Federal Highway Administration. Andy Smith, Florence. Ryan Blair, Beagilbert.
President.
Thank you. Jack Lorbeer, Glendale.
Present.
Thank you. Brian Harville, Goodyear.
Present.
Thank you. Keith Drunasky, Litchfield Park.
I'm here.
Thank you. Ammoni Uzaman, Maricopa.
Present.
Thank you. Angela McAluso, McDot.
Present.
Thank you. Sabina King, Mesa.
Present.
Thank you. Shar Johnson, Paradise Valley. Charles Andrews, Peoria. Letitia Vardigos, City of Phoenix. Christopher Wanamaker, Pinellas County.
Here.
Brad Novacek, Queen Creek.
Here.
Thank you. Jennifer Jack, Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community. Nathan Domi, Steve Scottsdale.
Present.
Thank you. Jonathan Fuch, Surprise.
Present.
Thank you. Corey Steely, Tempe.
Present.
Thank you. Aaron Herrera, Tolason.
Present.
Thank you. Grant Anderson, Youngtown.
Here.
Thank you. And one more question, we have one online attendee that I cannot identify, 090048. Can you make yourself known, please? One more time, please, we can't hear you. Oh, you're muted, I believe. Your name, please.
I'm Denise Lee with City of Phoenix.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, we have a call.
Thank you. Returning to item number six, which is the March. Returning to item number six, March 2025, Call for Projects Fiscal Years 26, 27, 28, Arterial Rehabilitation and Reconstruction Program. I'll turn it back over to Patrick Stone, Deputy Transportation Director of Programming.
Thank you, Chair, members of the committee. As, do we have the updated slide, Tyler? There it is. Apologies, before we cut to break, we did clarify, we did have the project listing we were missing a row. As you can see on the screen, this is the final cumulative project ranking for the arterial rehabilitation and reconstruction program. And with that, Chair Cristo, members of the Street Committee, that concludes my presentation. Happen to take any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Do any members have any questions or comments? Hearing none, prior to voting, there's an opportunity for members of the public to comment. Staff, have we received any requests on this agenda?
Thank you, Chair, we've received no online written comments for this agenda item.
Thank you.
Did you go back over what you had gone over before? I didn't quite hear what you said.
What particular item did you not hear? Mr. Anderson?
We can't hear you, Grant, so if you have a question, go ahead and chime in. May I have a motion to recommend approval for item number six?
The rank order of the projects, did you go back over those, Patrick? I didn't quite hear what you said.
Chair Cristo, members of the Street Committee, Mr. Anderson, yeah, we came back and we showed the updated slide, which is showing, we'd shown it previously prior to break, just the corrected slide showing the 24th road with the final project included on the sheet.
Can you put that rank order back up again, so we have a chance to look at it before we vote on it again?
It is on the screen now, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
No worries. I'll pause for a moment, just in case there are any other questions.
We'll give it a few seconds here.
Where did the, this is the rank order, but where did the money stop, since we can't fund them all?
Chair Cristo, members of the Street Committee, Mr. Anderson, as I noted earlier in my presentation, the technical committee has no input into the funding process, we are only discussing the ranked order of the projects. That discussion will occur next week at Transportation Review Committee, per the policies and procedures.
You can't give us a hint on how many could be funded with the 93 million that we got?
Mr. Chair, members of the Street Committee, again, Mr. Anderson, I have to reiterate, the technical committee has no oversight into the ranked order, into the funding, only the ranked order of projects, that responsibility for our programming guidelines and the policies and procedures resides with the Transportation Review Committee.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
Patrick, I do have a question again, sorry. Just for a reminder for me, what is the percentage breakdown of quantitative, qualitative?
It is 60% quantitative, 40% qualitative. Thank you, Patrick.
Hey, Patrick, just has a question, this is Angela with McDot. In terms of the committee, if they were to recommend moving forward with this list, if any project. Rating from any of the committee members changes and it changes the actual ranking, what is the process that MAG would take in that situation, if we do recommend this list to move forward?
Thank you, Chair Cristo, members of the committee. The hope had been, if there was a change in your scoring. We would capture that here during the conversation. If after the committee, and we do take action on this, and we are noted that there was a scoring issue, we would address that, we'll have to address that as part of the conversation with DRC. Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions for Patrick? Hearing and seeing none. May I have a motion to recommend approval of item number six, which is the approved list?
What should we do, approve?
Second. So we have approval from Phoenix, and second from Scottsdale. We have those participating in the meeting online, take part in the voice vote by turning on their cameras and unmuting their audio at this time. Members, please leave your cameras on until after the roll call vote. Can I have a voice vote for those in the room and those online? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. For those opposed, say nay. Members, please leave your cameras on. Staff, can you take roll call of the members participating virtually who did not turn on their cameras?
Thank you, Chair, we've received a vote from all that are present. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, the Regional Competitive Program, March 2025, Call for Project Fiscal Years 26, 27, 28, for the arterial widening program. This item is on the agenda for recommended approval, and will be presented by Patrick Stone, Deputy Transportation Director of Programming.
Thank you, Chair Cristo, members of the Street Committee. Now on to the second of the two. As the Chair noted, this is, again, the regional competitive programs, this time we are discussing the arterial widening program. Kind of similar to the slide deck you saw previously, this is the second of the two competitive programs being funded, first out of the R step. Again, a federally funded program, so all projects must adhere to federal standards. And one last chance to really express my appreciation for the work that went into this, this was a big lift. A lot was done, and sometimes in a very short amount of time, and I'm very pleased with the work that was accomplished by the working group, and ultimately the member agencies. As you see on the screen, these are the arterial widening program guidelines, look somewhat similar to the rehab, other than we use a green motif. Again, approved by Regional Council back on March 26th. Covers all aspects of the program. And really, you know, the key takeaway for the conversation today is the technical review of the rankings, which are done by the MAG Street Committee. Similar to what I did in the prior one, go through the goals, quite a few more goals, there's six goals related to the arterial widening program, in comparison to the rehab, and really, you kind of notice it in the first two goals, you have a capacity expansion, looking at existing roadways, but also the opportunity, sorry, for member agencies to submit for a new arterial roadway. And then, two of the other goals, they kind of pivot a little bit, and we talk about connectivity and economics, so there's, you do see an economic driver component to this call, that wasn't found within the rehab and reconstruction program. Again, safety being a vital component, we provide for safety of all roadway users, kind of the corollary to the connectivity is really supporting economic growth, and then finally, once again, we want to take care of the region's investments. Objective? Kind of like the prior program, it's really a compendium of the goals, so it's increasing mobility through expansion of the roadway network, extending the roadway network, while also still maintaining mobility and safety for the users of the system. And the eligibility is the same as it was in the arterial rehab program, where we do look at the arterials on the one mile grid network, we also think about those that provide connectivity and other key arterial corridors. So again, you see the evaluative criteria for the widening program, a little different, we actually have five quantitative factors, including things like average annual daily traffic, we have reliability factors, and then we bifurcate the safety factors into both looking at a serious fatal crash rate, but also looking at non-motorized crash data. Qualitative, similar to the rehab program, in that we have the meeting the stated goals of the program, unique items about your project, community outreach and safety, but what you really see added in is a factor for economic development. Overview, no different, call for projects went out March 28th, sent out to Management Committee, provided to this committee, applications were due on May 2nd. We did receive 14 eligible applications by the deadline, and there was just over $56 million in programming. Scheduled, no different, for the other program, we've taken these two programs together, we are sitting here today on May 15th at Street Committee, to consider the projects, look at the review and ranking. These will potentially move on to Transportation Review Committee next week, and then on to policy committees in June. Again, award notification sent to member agencies by the end of next month. As noted, 14 applications, I could get them all on one page this time, so it was a little easier, you can see the A member agencies and the applications they submitted. I'll pause for a moment, Chair, any questions or comments from the committee before we get into the actual applications themselves? All right, thank you. So again, what we see here is an overview of the dispersment of projects across the region, again, you see where the projects are located, along with the associated project ID, good, good diverse group of projects across the region. With that, we'll start with the City of Apache Junction. Their project is Tomahawk Road from Southern Avenue to Broadway Avenue, and with that, I'll turn it over to Raquel.
Good afternoon, Raquel Shet, City of Apache Junction. This is Tomahawk Road, Southern Avenue to Broadway Avenue. This is our only arterial in the City of Apache Junction that is currently one lane. So we're looking to expand the existing roadway, make it safe for pedestrians, because this has a lot of, it's unique to the city in which it's all residential. We are looking at expanding this, adding sidewalk, curb gutters, streetlights, bicycle lanes, even a buffer lane for the bicycle lanes, since this is all mainly residential. But this portion of Tomahawk Road, we look as making it as a bypass to the US 60, if something were to happen on the US 60, we need to get people from the 60 to Old West Highway. Old West Highway turns into Apache Trail, and going into City of Mesa, it turns into Main Street. So this is our bypass to alleviate traffic from the US 60. As I mentioned, this is going to be an expansion of the capacity of an existing arterial. Currently, right now, we have planned for over 400 new homes to be developed along Old West Highway, which is just shy of Broadway Avenue. We also have 56 new RV home parks. So like I said, this is mainly residential, it poses as a safety concern for pedestrians, which the inclusion of the sidewalks would be great. Currently, right now, it is inconsistent in where the roadway is, so we're hoping to straighten out the alignment, because it kind of goes, it meanders between the section line, so. That's it.
Thank you, Raquel. Do we have any questions from the committee for the city on this project? Thank you, Raquel. Moving on, next project is the first of two projects for the City of Avondale, this is Lower Buckeye Road from the Aguafria River East Bank to 107th Avenue. Oh, Kimberly's going to present.
Sit on?
Yep.
Hi, I'm Kim Moon, City Engineer and Director of Engineering for City of Avondale, and I just wanted to do a brief introduction of Avondale, and talk about some of the, both of these project applications, as well as I have brought my technical representative with me, we're in the middle of a design concept report for Lower Buckeye Road, and prepared to answer any technical questions you may have. And so, Avondale borders City of Phoenix, Tolason, Litchfield Park, Goodyear, and has got I-10 that runs through it. We also have the Aguafria, Salt River, and Hilo River, lots of bridges, lots of traffic, we have significant amounts of floodplain. And Future State Route 30 is coming through the south side of Avondale, Lower Buckeye Road is very close to Future State Route 30, and just could use some traffic congestion relief, I guess. Anybody who comes down I-10 over to Avondale has experienced the daily crashes and backup, so it's very much a safety issue. So with regard specifically to Lower Buckeye Road, we do have two applications, I was not sure if I should have it all as one application or split it in two, so I'm trying to improve my odds with two different applications. Lower Buckeye Road was a rural road with one lane in each direction, with a minimal pavement section. It runs east-west across the full width of Avondale from Goodyear Airport, along historic downtown schools, our Public Works Facility, and across the Aguafria over to the City of Phoenix. Is a critical corridor, it's very close to Future State Route 30, parallel to, and most of the adjacent parcels on this section of road are already developed, so there's not a lot of opportunity for development, to do their half-street improvements along this corridor. It needs to be brought up to current urban standards, and help improve the safety now, and help alleviate the traffic that's coming in the future. So with that, those are just a few of the intro notes I took, I was going to say more, but this is a long day, I don't want to take all your time, so. Any questions for the City of Avondale on the technical or qualitative aspects of these two applications? Nothing? That's too easy, come on.
Well, Kimberly, if you'll indulge, I'll real quick forward on to the second of the two applications, as the city noted, this is, I guess it goes all the way from the Litchfield Road to 107th Avenue, if you take the two projects in the totality, so this is the second of their two projects, which is. Which is.
So, yeah, the first one was from Litchfield to Aguafria River, and the second one is actually 127th to 107th, so that's both sides of the Aguafria. Hopefully, in the future, we'll get a bridge, but I'm not asking for a bridge.
I guess I do have a question. Nathan, City of Scottsdale, if you get funding for both the projects, will you run it as one combined project? Will you run it simultaneously?
Yes, that will be my recommendation, if we're successful in receiving some funding, it would be one combined project. I do have Ardura here with me, we are already in the middle of a design concept report, we're identifying. Relocations, and all the issues associated with that, and it's one design concept report, we'll probably run it as one project, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kim, this is Angela with McDot, just curious, if it was run as one project, are you going to include that crossing, is that anticipated there, or we'll just have that pinch point in there?
For now, it'll have that pinch point, I am, I've broached discussions with the county on if they could do joint participation on a bridge, they're interested, but I don't have any confirmation on that at this time.
Thank you, the county does not have any plans for that bridge at this time.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the city? Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Next project is City of Buckeye, Verado Way Yuma Road to Van Buren Street, Mr. Willet?
We have three projects, John Willet, City Buckeye, I don't know what my title is, it keeps changing all the time, I'm just the guy in charge of getting roads built, so. Little history on Buckeye, you guys are familiar with it, it's that last stop on the way to LA, to go to the beach or something, where you got gas, food, or went to the restroom. 640 square miles, 120,000 people, many of you have heard the story, we have less than 20 miles of completed arterials in Buckeye. When I say completed, that's both sides, each direction, for one continuous mile, so we have a lot of two-lane farm roads, so all three of these projects are one of those. Verado wave between Yuma and Van Buren, the north limits is three lanes in each direction, just north of Van Buren, south of Yuma is a charter school, ADT on this road, I think, is about 18,000 on a two-lane road with no turn lane. Those of you guys who do traffic would probably go, wow, that's pretty impressive, pumping that many cars through only a two-lane road, so, next slide. All three of our projects, we are in the process of selecting design consultants, we are moving forward with design, so am I talking about Chandler again? Okay, no, back to Buckeye. And so we're proceeding with the design, can we know we need to get them done? This funding would just help offset some of those costs, we're looking to do two lanes in each direction and a median, and then putting a sidewalk out there, because there's no sidewalk at all, on either area. I will say this, it does go through state land, however, we do already have an acquired roadway easement from when the first part of the road got built, so. You want to go to the next one? Or I can answer questions on this one? I can guess what the next one is? I'll get the third one right. So Miller Road is on our western, or actually the center of Buckeye, it actually is the main road that feeds through downtown, this ironically was on, above the line in the original Prop 479 for arterial roads, as part of a trade, it was removed, so Buckeye has no arterial streets in Prop 479, funded, so any improvements we get done is through this, applications like this. This is the perfect nightmare for us, again, it's a two-lane road either direction, this one actually has about 20,000 cars a day. Developments to the south have built their half-street improvements, but all their cars are using this roadway to get to I-10, and this is a huge pinch point, kind of a really big pinch point in Buckeye, so, again, we're moving forward with the design, it's adding another lane in each direction and a median, just to improve that corridor. The very north limits of this project is in the process of construction right now, to build the six lanes, three in each direction and a median, from Lower Buckeye to I-10, two big warehouse facilities right there, Funko, in case you want your little bobblehead dude, and five below, distribution center, and then just south of here is a Fry's and a whole bunch of residential coming in, that's just pumping more traffic on top of the 20,000 that's already out there. If you want to go to the next one? Our third one is Jack Rabbit Trail, Thomas to Indian School, if you're familiar with that area, the Jack Rabbit TI is under design right now by ADOT, they plan on going to construction, advertising into this year, construction in '26, hope we have the TI open by early '27. Buckeye has a project to improve Jack Rabbit Trail from McDow to Thomas, that's going to go to construction early, that puts three lanes in each direction. This portion between Thomas and Indian School is another huge pinpoint. Indian School is a secondary access for Verado, our prestigious master planning community, I didn't say that right, I gotta say Verado. So this is actually another huge constrained project, I think the ADT on this one's about 16,000, again, a lot of cars on the two-lane road, looking to do, again, adding another lane in each direction and a raised median, and some sidewalk. There is an existing multi-use path on the west side, next to the flood control channel, this would only put the sidewalk on the east side, so we're actually able to narrow the roadway cross-section, minimize any right-of-way acquisition that's needed, this one will need right-of-way acquisition. Verado wouldn't. Miller, we are in the, are in the negotiations with developers to dedicate the right-of-way, so we should have it in hand before we go to construction. So I can answer any questions on all three?
Thanks, John, any questions for the city on the three projects that they presented? All right, thanks, sir. Town of Gilbert, Higley Road, Warner Road to Amber Lane. Ryan, are you presenting this one?
Yes, sir, I am.
Go ahead.
All right, appreciate the time, Ryan Blair, Town of Gilbert, this will be for Higley Road, Amber Lane, which is just south of Elliot, and then it'll go south to Higley Road, the 202 is just to the south of us, there's a charter school on the west side of Higley Road, just north of the 202 Charter School there, American Leadership Academy, so this particular area here will be a scallop, it's in a scallop street condition currently, southbound was reconstructed a few years ago, and then this is northbound, we've had some developers come in that did some half-street improvements along Higley Road, and this is kind of a last corridor here, that, been trying to work with the developer, but there's really no movement on it, and due to the capacity issues with the 202, and then also the charter school, that this is becoming kind of a pinch point, coming down Higley Road northbound. We'll have additional turn lanes going in on this location, some raised medians, it is a major arterial that our standard is to have some median islands along this corridor, continue the streetlights, some fiber conduit, and then also the actual cable as well, and then because currently, it's, we've got three lanes north of this area, three lanes in each direction south of this area, there's some tapers going on, since we have to restripe the entire roadway, basically from Warner, just north of this towards Elliot Road, to make, to have all three lanes consistently striped through the area. Trying to see if there's anything else, there is some utility relocations that would be needed, because of the scallop condition, I believe there's some 69 KV in there, some retention basins have to go in, and then also there's about 7,000 square foot of right-of-way that will be needed adjacent to the north end of this project. And that is all I got.
Thanks, Ryan, any questions for the town on the project? All right, thank you, sir. Next, we have the City of Glendale, 67th Avenue, Deer Valley to Pinnacle Peak, Jack, are you going to be presenting this item again?
Once again, I'll have Javier Gorla, our principal engineer.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jack, this is Javier, so this is. We have some widening that we'd like to accomplish along 67th Avenue from Deer Valley to Pinnacle Peak, this project also ties into two adjacent roadway widening efforts at the southern terminus, the city, or Glendale, has a separate project underway to widen the roadway by one additional northbound lane, and at the northern terminus, the City of Peoria is widening their segment of the corridor by one lane in each direction, so it'll be three lanes in each direction total, so these coordinated efforts, improvements will support consistent capacity and mobility throughout the corridor. You know, it will require some right-of-way along the west side of 67th, I calculated about 40,000 square feet, more or less, to be determined during scoping. Let's see, we have some of the unique things that are, that are unique to this area, so we have a major high school along the west side of the corridor, we have a major park park facility, a regional park facility, Thunderbird Conservation Park to the east for probably about a half mile on the east side of the road. A lot of people go visit there. This is a gateway to Lake Pleasant to the north, and then major business development and commercial already developed and developing, especially in the north in the City of Peoria. And then to the south, the the Arrowhead commercial area along Bell Road. So a very important corridor. And just to give you kind of give you an idea of the of the ADT, it's approximately, it's shy of fifteen thousand in each direction. So fair number of people traveling it every day. And with that, I'll take any questions. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Javier. Moving on, we now have the City of Goodyear's project, which is this is it's it's two roadway sections that are joined. So it's Estrella Parkway from Yuma Road to Goodyear Boulevard. And then separately, Yuma Road from Goodyear Boulevard to Estrella Parkway. Brian, will you be taking this one?
Yes, sir. Is it on? So this roadway corrects or this project corrects a scallop condition on the roadway. This is a significant intersection as it borders the Goodyear Ballpark, which houses Major League Baseball as as well as the city's only post office. This will introduce new bike lanes and sidewalks, increasing increasing public safety. Any questions?
Any questions for the city on this project? Thank you, Brian. Next is the City of Maricopa's project. This is Whiten Parker Road from Civic Center Plaza to Honeycut Road.
Is this on? Good afternoon, Keith Brown, Public Works Director with City of Maricopa. And as John Willett was saying, Buckeye is kind of the last place you get to California. If you've been to San Diego or Rocky Point, you've probably gone through the northern portion of Maricopa. However, Maricopa is developing significantly to the east. And we have John Wayne Parkway. That's our main roadway going through the city. Whiten Parker is a another north-south major corridor through the city. This project is to widen Whiten Parker in between Bowlin Road and Honeycut Road. And we have right at Bowlin and Whiten Parker, we have our city center complex with our city hall, our library, our police station, and we're going to be designed. We are designing and to build a large civic center park at that location. We have some full street widening north of Bowlin Road, about quarter mile. But then north of that, just like in the farming communities, two lane road. In some locations, there's some county lots that ran into the city. And it's going to be on the city to widen and improve that roadway going north up to Honeycut. One of the bottlenecks we have is the Honeycut Whiten Parker intersection. It is increasingly become congested and the number of accidents have increased relatively large from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. We've gone from four accidents a year in twenty twenty up to fourteen in twenty-four. And this year alone, in the first three months, we've had eight accidents already. So I know compared to larger cities and such, there's much more accidents, but in our community, that's quite a bit for a single intersection. So a big part of this project is to widen the intersection, which is a only half street, two lanes. You know, we have four four lanes going into two lanes, and there's a lot of congestion. And with all the growth going on there, this was our our number one project for we wanted to submit because it's important to us for the transportation. One one other thing to note is we get a lot of large oversized vehicles, trucks through Maricopa. And this is one of the routes that they like to use is down Maricopa, coming from two thirty-eight, three forty-seven down down to Maricopa Gastro Ground Highway to bypass the freeways. So this will help greatly with that project as well. Safety wise, you know, we do think it'll greatly increase safety within Maricopa. It will provide pedestrian connections between neighborhoods and our civic center, and and there's just a gap there that we greatly need to fill. And this funding will will help us advance this project. Advance this project. We do have it in our CIP for FY twenty-nine thirty. It's not fully funded, but this will help us to get it fully funded and move this forward, and and it would be a great addition to the city. So appreciate that. With that, I'll have questions.
Thanks, Keith. Any questions for the city on this project? Next, we have the Maricopa County Project. This is Bethany Home Road, one hundred and ninety-fifth Avenue, out three oh three. Angela, will you be presenting this one?
I will. Thank you, Patrick, Chair, members of the Street Committee. Angela McAluso with McDod, presenting the only submitted project from the county for these competitive programs. The Bethany Home Road Corridor has been on the county's radar for about ten years. We did do an area study where we identified the need for it to be four lanes, two lanes in each direction with a two-way left turn lane. In twenty nineteen, we did a corridor improvement study where we brought together Glendale, Buckeye, ADOT, flood control, as well as all the utilities, including MWD, to really plan out this corridor. Since twenty nineteen, we've been able to work with our building department to work with developers and MWD to get those needed half street improvements. But we do need to get kind of the main line of this corridor through. This project does include the crossing of the Beardsley Canal, which is about one hundred and ninety-first Avenue. This crossing will provide a a needed connection for the Canyon View High School. That's on the corner of Perryville and Bethany Home. The only access point for the school to the parking areas is via Bethany Home. It also provides the connection between Buckeye and Glendale all the way through. One other unique aspect of this project that we wanted to note was that the county did do the Camelback Crossing of the Beardsley Canal. So we were very well versed in what is needed for this crossing. And like I said, we have been working with MWD to hold this footprint to be able to do this project moving forward. So we appreciate the committee's consideration of this project. I'll answer any questions.
Thanks, Angela. Any questions for the county on their project? All right. Next is the City of Mesa, Crisman Road from Elliot to Guadalupe. Turn of Sabina, are you going to take this?
I will. Thank you, Chair, members of the committee. I'm Sabina King, excuse me, City of Mesa, and this is a very small project, but mighty. It is a Crisman Road between Elliot Road and Guadalupe, just east of the two oh two and south of the sixty. And it's the one of the last arterial connection that is missing out in this area, and it's of high importance to City of Mesa due to the immense growth in that area to the south. We have our Elliot Road Tech Corridor. We have Eastmore Community, and we're expecting about one hundred thousand jobs and one hundred thousand residents in Eastmore Community by twenty forty. And we've gotten lots of requests in the past from residents to make this connection, and we're finally here to do this. It's been on the radar for a long time for the city. We knew it was a roadway gap that had to be addressed. And I wanted to highlight quickly something I could have responded to better as part of the application. I did mention we didn't have public outreach, but the reality is this has been in our twenty forty Mesa Transportation Plan. It's been identified as a project in our twenty fifty Transportation Plan. It was part of public surveys. It was also, you know, we had it online. We had we have sanctioned by council, by the mayor, by city management. We have a program in our CIP for construction in twenty twenty-seven. So again, this is a very vetted project and supported from residents as well as Mesa Council. Safety is a big item here. There is a there's two schools, Desert Ridge High School and Junior High School to the north. So we have lots of bicycles and pedestrians in the area, and the existing roadway to the north of the segment is six lanes wide at forty-five mile an hour, and that's just how we built our roadways at the time. The development built it to a six lane ultimate cross section. And that was in the early two thousands. And when we built this roadway farther to the south, it's part of Eastmark, it's a very different cross section. It's more narrow. So we're going from the six lane arterial to a three lane collector. And so this connection will take this context into consideration. We will build this new segment at three lanes and then tie in nicely to the six lane material to the north by reducing part of the existing roadway. And it's twofold. It's A to kind of make this transition from the south into this residential neighborhood. We're going to reduce the speed limit to thirty-five miles an hour. We're reducing the curb to curb distance, and that is in line with one of our goals of our comprehensive safety action plan to remove conflicts, meaning pedestrians now have a shorter crossing distance crossing Crisman Road. Also, vehicles pulling out of the neighborhood have to negotiate less travel lanes as they pull out. And we will have curb gutter sidewalk, street lighting, allowing micro mobility. And the great thing is too, to the south, just off of Elliot Road, there's free basins that are heavily used for recreation, not just for walking and running, but apparently something I learned, it's the only city park that sanctions RC devices, and there's a lot of people flying drones and all kinds of things out there. So it's heavily used. It has its own parking lot. And with this connection, people from the north can just go directly south along the sidewalk and make use of these facilities. And there's also a disc golf course at Eastmark that's heavily used. So it's a great connection, not just for vehicles, for for retaining local talent as far as work is concerned, and also enhancing multimodal connections and recreation in the area. And with that, opening up the questions.
Thank you, Sabina. Any questions for the City of Mesa on their project? All right, thank you. Next, we have the City of Phoenix, twenty-seventh Avenue from Lower Buckeye to Buckeye. Leticia?
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the Mag Streets Committee. Again, my name is Leticia Vargas. And today I'll be presenting on our only widening program project on twenty-seventh Avenue from Lower Buckeye to Buckeye Road. The project length is just under a mile. We are going from a one lane in each direction, mostly one lane in each direction configuration along that segment to two lane, to to a two-one-two essentially along that corridor. Next slide, please. So what we'll do is definitely widen the roadway to accommodate that larger capacity. We'll be doing curb gutter sidewalk and eighty ADA ramps. We'll also be adding traffic signals, traffic control devices, and street lighting, providing for bicycle lanes and pavement drainage. We this project was previously funded in our CIP back in twenty eighteen. Because of funding shortfalls, unfortunately, this project did get shelved. It is a project that is definitely in need. There are a lot of businesses in the area. Not only is it a scallop street, but it's also the pavement is in really poor condition because of all the heavy traffic that's in that area. The the right now, it's carrying about nine thousand vehicles, and over the last five years, we've had about thirty-four collisions along that corridor. I'd like to say build it and they will come, but this is definitely an area where there will be, you know, access improvements made. And overall, we think it's a very, very competitive, much needed project for this corridor. Thank you.
Thanks, Leticia. Any questions for the city on their project? All right. The and I can guarantee this is the last of the arterial widening program is the City of Surprises project, which is on Cotton Lane from Greenway to Peoria.
Good afternoon, Chair, committee members. Again, thank you for the opportunity to present on this project. Cotton Lane is one of those corridors where it's with the explosion of residential development on the west side of Cotton Lane and commercial on east side. This street is heavily scalloped. At some locations, it's three three lanes in each direction to to at some locations where it's drops down to one lane. So a lot of hashed out pavement. And also, as part of this project, we want to build out Cotton Lane from Greenway all the way to Peoria Avenue to full full street cross section with curb gutter sidewalk, streetlights and and bike lanes, provide drainage, drainage and install signals and drainage facilities to make sure that they're built to our standards. Again, it's a heavily needed needed project to meet our residential needs in the city. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the city on their project? Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, thank you, Chair. That completes all the application presentations for the arterial widening program. Are there any other questions or comments before we get into the scoring? All right, hearing none. Preface it the same as I did for the arterial rehab program. There are slides for each of the five factors for quantitative, as well as the factors for qualitative. You will see the ranked order by factor and then a subtotal for the quantitative, a subtotal for the qualitative, and the final slide will be the final ranked order of project listings. So first, we have AADT for the quantitative ranking. You can see the rankings one through fourteen. There were only fourteen applications. So you can see the ranked order of projects here. And then we move on. So next, we have level of travel time reliability and planning time index. So again, this is a reliability measure. Again, you can see the ranked order of projects from one to fourteen. Moving on, we then develop here is the travel time index. Again, a ranked order of projects going from one to fourteen. And then we have the two fact safety factors. First is serious and fatal crash rate. You can see the project rankings. And then finally, we also have the non non motorized crash rate factors. And again, you can see the rankings. And from there, here's the final rankings of the quantitative scores for the arterial widening program. I'll pause for a moment for the committee to review. All right, qualitative. Again, we have the the factors in play. So first, we have, make sure I got these. So this is the meets the stated goals of the arterial widening program. Again, a ranking from one to fourteen. See how the projects rank based on alignment with the goals. These are again, were evaluated by committee members for the scoring. Next, we have there we go, unique attributes for the projects. So here, remember agencies where you build to identify unique attributes of their projects. We then have a standalone safety and data, safety data consideration evaluative criteria. So member agencies could talk about additional safety elements on their project. Moving on, we then have the community outreach ranked order of projects, one to fourteen. And then finally, we have the economic development ranking. Again, one to fourteen. And what this then gives you, here's the qualitative ranking of the projects from one to fourteen. An advance of question that will come? Just a reminder, the the breakdown between the two is a sixty-five thirty-five on the widening program. And then the slide you've been waiting for. This is the ranked order of projects, factoring for both quantitative and qualitative. So you can see on the screen the project ranking, one to fourteen, and I will pause here for a moment. Let the committee digest the the data.
Hey, Patrick, can both all the ranking be provided to the Streets Committee after the meeting, ahead of the meeting notes?
Yeah, we'll 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 figure out a way to get this because it's it's the challenge is is some of this was was being developed as we until yesterday for some of the data considerations. But yes, it will. Once we're we concluded the the meeting, we'll be able to get this information out because I if if I understand, it will be part of the presentation package for TRC. So it'll be part of that mail out as well, and that should hopefully go out tomorrow. So it'll be part of that mail out as well, and that should hopefully go out tomorrow. But yeah, you, that'll be an opportunity to review always. I know it's a lot to try and calculate and or look at where's my project. Um. With that, Mr. Chair, members of the transportation or street committee, uh, that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any additional questions you or the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Do any of the members have any other comments or, or questions for Patrick regarding the arterial widening program?
This is Brad from the, Noah Check from the city or the town, excuse me, Queen Creek. Patrick, would it be possible on those, the, the total ranking slides to put the dollar request that those projects were listed under the type, the location?
Uh. Chair Cristo, members of the trans, uh, street committee, uh, Mr. Nocheck. Actually, that was, I did, I, I had considered that was a very intentional to not put that on there as I only wanted the focus to be. On the project ranking based on the scoring and not have people start trying to do a bunch of math and calculating. Where they might perceive a brake line or some sort of funding policy conversation to be. So yeah, it was, and I appreciate that will be part of the packet for TRC. It will actually show, um. It'll show the, all of the data you're seeing here. Total project cost, total requested amount and recommended funding amount. So that'll be part of the next, next package.
Okay, thank you.
No, appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for the members? Seeing and hearing none. Uh, prior to voting, there is an opportunity for members of the public to comment. Uh, staff, have you received any comments on this agenda item?
Thank you, Chair. We've received no online written comments for this agenda item.
Thank you. May I have a motion to recommend approval for item number seven?
Move to approve.
Second.
Online, can you give your name and jurisdiction? Okay, Glendale. Um. So we have a motion in a second. Um, we will have those participating in the meeting online take part in the voice vote by turning on their cameras and unmuting their audio at this time. Members, please leave your cameras on until after the roll call vote, vote. Can I have a voice vote on those in the room and those online? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Members, please leave your cameras on. Staff, can you take roll call of the members participating virtually who did not turn on their cameras?
Thank you, Chair. I believe we caught everyone. Uh, Jack Lorbeer, you turned on your camera just now.
Move to approve or recommend approval.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, the, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number eight. This is a request for future agenda items. Are there any requests from the membership for an item on a future agenda? Seeing and hearing none. We'll move on to item number nine, which is comments from the committee. Are there any comments or announcements from the membership? Seeing and hearing none. We ready for adjournment. The next meeting of the street committee will be on Tuesday, June 10th at, uh, 1:00 PM. With no further business, today's meeting is adjourned at 12:55 PM. Thank you, everybody.